Hello, everyone. I call to order the March 16th Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. Would our treasurer please call the roll?
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Dr. Moffett?
Mr. Murawski?
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
President Lindy?
Here. Excited to have everyone today. We're running a little bit behind, so we're going to move pretty quickly in 30 seconds to our first discussion item. I just want to share briefly for board members and for folks who are here, our three-month board priorities are now showing on the agenda. We discussed and adopted these at our last meeting, and that's the short version. If you want to see the longer version that has the different specific outcomes for where we want to be by the 13th of June, you can see that on the back of that first page. So won't rehash those here, except to say that we're committed to ensuring our new superintendent has a strong start in the district, that we pass a strong FY '23 budget, that we have a strong transportation plan for the next school year, and that we begin a coaching series on effective board governance. And I think all of those are moving along pretty well. So we're excited to invite up Connie Solano to hear our presentation on transportation.
There's some traffic concerns there, so they're going to do some research and get back to us. Sorda has also going to be changing their on-time performance, though we actually received those on-time performances that we shared in the past from Sorda, and it was based on like their, the schedule that they have to the public, like, "I'll get it this stop at this time." And so through their GPS process, they were able to indicate what time that bus got there. But what they informed us is even if the bus got there later than what the previous schedule said, it was still enough time for the kids to get to school. So what we've done moving forward is they're going to give us an on-time performance based on their, that bus getting to that stop designated as a stop for the high school, getting there 10 minutes before school starts. Okay? So that's what their OTP is going to be based on. And then we're going to move from there, see how that works out. We also requested that we get monthly daily, monthly files of unique riders on a daily basis, want to be able to track that, though that we're not paying for passes that are not being used. And then we did ask Sorda if there would be some compromise with the extra routes, considering that we do have a percentage of students who only take one transfer, but then we also have kids who take no transfer. So we asked if it was a possibility to maybe bring back the extra routes for those kids who have to take a transfer, and unfortunately, they're not going to be able to do that. But they do want us to get back to the table and talk about the contract, because CPS did not sign the addendum for this year. Next slide. We've signed a contract with a national search firm. The advertisement for the position has already been posted, or in the process of being posted on various job boards. I've got a timeline for when they plan on rolling each thing out, so hopefully I'll be able to have, they'll have some applicants, and they'll do the screening for us, and then we'll have some folks that we can have the interim, I mean, the incoming superintendent make a decision on. And transportation update, I'm so happy to report that we have begun the optimization study. I'm really, really, I can't tell, I'm really excited about that. We've used the notes that we received from the Growth Committee, Finance and Growth Committee, on some things that they wanted included in our transportation plan, and so we've passed on that information to the company that's doing the optimization study so that they can look at the routes, for example, with high schools starting either at 8:30 a.m. or 8:45 a.m. It still falls in the early time window, but there gets to be a point where you can't make them start too early, because then you can't link them with other buses, and now you're adding more buses to the routes. So they're going to run the optimization study with those high schools that are currently starting at 9:15, at 8:30 and 8:45. We're going to run it with kids, with no kids being on a bus more than 55 minutes, and then run it with the way things are. And so the plan is to provide a, the goal is to provide you with a comprehensive plan that shows all the different options, the cost of those different options, including the options to, what it would cost us for Sorda if kids live 1.25 miles away ineligible versus if we move that eligibility to 1.0 miles. And we will also put in there a cost for a dedicated fleet. And then at that point, the board and the incoming superintendent can make a decision on where the district needs to move to. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Ms. Solano, questions from board members? Ms. Bolton? Vice President Jones?
Sorry. Okay, on the page, Transportation Update, right after the vision, so that page. Just curious to know, you stated that Sorda is measuring the on-time performance based on buses arriving to the high school 10 minutes before school start time. And are those reports, are you seeing those reports now?
We just talked about it, so it takes some time for them to run those reports. So as soon as we get those reports, I'll be able to share the on-time performance data again.
Okay. I'm particularly curious about the students who use a transfer, if those students are arriving on time or late. So the one transfer or the two transfers? Just want to take a look at those buckets. Those are the students where Sorda is saying they cannot accommodate extra routes, but if their regular route is, I mean, if it's creating a situation where they're arriving to school late, that's just a different conversation, in my opinion.
So, Board Member Jones, that might take a little bit longer. We can definitely do it once I get the data back from them.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. I'll see what times those cards pinged, and then I'll be able to, for those kids who take, okay.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to make sure everybody knows I'm very encouraged about where we are on the transportation. I'm not encouraged necessarily about Metro, where they are right now, but I want to be complimentary of the fact that we seem to be at least in control and have our own kind of handle, much more information and greater specificity. So we'll go into those negotiations for the contract with Metro and other vendors, obviously with much stronger case. I appreciate the administration for where we've gotten. I would just, a suggestion on the info thing, I love where you put the numbers of students. I think we're so late into this or so close to when big decisions have to be made, it'd be great to do that all the way down that column if you have that information, as well as possibly at least the current cost of all of those.
Yes.
So that board members kind of know how that breaks down. And I think the most important thing, for sure, is this needing to get into the contract negotiations with Metro, and they say they can't do certain things, but I think we're showing a lot of willingness to compromise, and I think their business plan and the amount of money that they have in their treasury, so to speak, could allow them to be a little bit more compromising with us and for our kids, because we're talking in terms of kids that have no transfers, ride the regular routes, and then the kids that have a transfer that make those be extra routes because of this ontimeliness that Vice President Jones mentions. And I do want to make sure that when we get into these contract negotiations, we're going to have to have board involvement with that. You have the expertise, and the administration's done well, but we've been burned once, not during this administration, but in the previous administration, we've been burned on that contract. So again, I think good stuff is happening, and I'm glad that we still are talking about a possible dedicated bus fleet and what that might cost. And I know we're going to be discussing, at least the three of us are going to be discussing in greater specificity, some issues in finance and budget and growth. So appreciate the hard work and really appreciate superintendent's effort in driving this and in you doing it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Bolton. Mr. Murawski?
Yeah, first, I'd just like to echo the kudos of my colleague, Solano, and all the work that's gone into it, your team and everybody in administration. The one-pager is excellent. I would venture a guess that most people have no idea, to the extent we go above and beyond for our students, I appreciated that as well. It's a nice piece to have. Also, one last thing that made me really excited. So about four years ago, or five years ago, I think, right when I got here, I brought up that Euler bus stop, the people that are not sitting up here anymore. And so to see that that's actually moving is really great, because it is in a terrible, terrible place where the Euler bus stop is, extraordinarily unsafe. So that's awesome. My main question, I'm happy to see that Metro wants to sit down and talk about the contract negotiations. Everything I hear, whether it's on the street, pun intended, or just around, is that they are more than amenable to working with us. I certainly, speaking for myself, am more than amenable to working with them. I don't think we can do this and all this stuff that we do brag about without them. Of course, the cost that we saw a couple months ago was insanely unacceptable, so hopefully we can get that cost down. My question is, do you know, is there a timeline for those conversations?
Well, we know the cost. Interim Superintendent Ahmad and myself met with their CEO and Chair, Portier, and they are willing to honor the 315 for next year as well. So our unrestricted parts are, they have not gone up in price.
Great. And so with the contract negotiation, is there a timeline for that?
No.
Okay.
It was just brought up.
All right.
Can we come back to the table?
Great. Awesome. Thank you.
And I just thought it was important to have an introduction with Metro and Ms. Wright, and so that she's at the table and making those final decisions. So we're setting up that meeting now.
Thank you, Mr. Murawski. Mr. Craig or Mrs. Weinberg, anything from the two of you?
I'll just mention, I think it's, you know, again echoing Mike and Eve there, that it's great that we are getting back on the discussion around getting a contract. I think one of the things that we really want to be able to look at in that optimization study is that long-term viability of some of these solutions, and whether or not that means other changes need to be made within the district. I think the challenge is, even when we're talking about students having a transfer, the reason they have a transfer is because they're traveling so far from their home to get to school. And that long-term success of that is not, that shouldn't be our goal, right? The long-term should be to be able to provide a quality education in a reasonable distance to their home, and that's something I think that as we think about these studies, we can look at. But I think it's really great, because I think we have great quality schools, I think we have great programming, I think we have a lot of great things going on, and it's just making sure that we have folks understanding how to access some of those things, how to be a part of those things throughout that part, because I think that's the other part of the transportation discussion that we sometimes don't have.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Anything from anybody else? I think I'll probably just not get too deep into it, because I want to bring up our very patient presenters here for our next one, but just to say that, you know, when we talked about the board's priority around a strong transportation plan for next year, one of the things we, that we really care about are clear measures of success for next school year. And so just to reiterate, when we do see the proposal, excited to see what proposed measurable wins would look like. And I'm 100% sure that's part of what you all are already doing, and excited to do the continued work you're doing. Last call on transportation? Okay. We will bring up our next, thank you, Ms. Solano. We'll transition to our next presentation.
Yes, I am so excited to bring this cross-functional team up. We have the Curriculum Department, DSS, and Positive School Culture. This is an academic update, Positive School Culture update, along with some data on the return on investment for summer scholars. So kicking us off is Dr. Bunger.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. I'm thrilled to be with you. My name is Dr. Carrie Bunger. I'm the Director of Positive School Culture and Safety. This is my first time before this board since the birth of my daughter, Charlie, so she is five months old, and I hope watching right now. So I want to thank you for this opportunity to share student outcomes as a result of the academic behavioral and social emotional work this year. In addition, we're going to highlight an integrated instructional focus for us moving forward grounded in multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS. The work that we'll be discussing today directly aligns with, and next slide, our strategic plan in terms of student-centered decision-making and health and safety. Next slide, please. Now, multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS, is an evolution, if you're familiar with the term response to intervention, or way back Intervention Assistance Teams, IAT. Multi-tiered systems of support is a framework of integration where we have both academic, social-emotional, and behavioral needs being met. You will see that there are tiers or levels of support, tier one, two, and three. All students receive support at tier one, that is our foundation, both academic and social-emotional. Then for students who are identified at risk, we have additional supports at tier two. And then finally, at tier three, students that need intensive individualized supports, then those supports are provided at a tier three level. When we were thinking of instruction, both Curriculum, DSS, and PSC felt very strongly that MTSS, an integrated approach based on input of cross-functional teams, is both urgent and necessary in order for us to continue to improve student outcomes. MTSS is aligned not only to what's articulated in our strategic plan, but also our equity and anti-racism policy. MTSS is for all students, addresses the needs of all students just in time instead of waiting to fail, increases academic potential, decreases discipline disparities, and special education identification. So tonight, you're going to hear more about instructional supports across the tiers, and I'm very excited to share those pieces, as well as data in terms of outcomes in our current state. Next slide, please. So first, in terms of the work of Positive School Culture, I would like to share these two run charts for you. On the right-hand side, you will see the tiers that are being noted, that are being addressed by the work that you see. First off, for Positive School Culture, our big dots are our measurable outcomes, are both attendance as well as decreasing exclusions. So what you see here on the left-hand side is a run chart made by our partners in Cincinnati Children's Hospital that helps to quantify the attendance rate over time this school year, and currently, we're around 84%. The numerator in this math equation is the number of attended instructional hours over the total number of instructional hours. So this is not a function of students on the left-hand side, this is a function of instructional hours. So when looking at this, just keep in mind that during COVID-19 and in-person learning, if a student was isolated or under quarantine, those are not considered instructional hours. So even though last year we ended at 85%, the fact that we're at 84% with those pieces in place, I think, shows the strength of the work that has been done and we will continue to do. On the right-hand side, you will see a line graph or a run chart that summarizes the percentage of students attending all instructional periods, and this is for elementary school. So this is looking at the percentage of students attending all day. And you'll see that in January, during the time of Omicron as well as other illnesses, we did see a decrease, but we have shifted twice in a positive direction in terms of our attendance. There's a lot of work that is behind all of these data points in terms of the work that's being done, both at the school level by our building administrators, teachers, and social workers. And I just want to share that our school social workers have been working tirelessly, and I'm so thankful for the investment of the board with our school social workers, making home visits, working with families, making referrals to community agencies, doing everything possible to try to remove barriers to learning so students can come to school. Next slide, please. In terms of our current state with exclusions, I'd like to share the following run chart, which summarizes the number of exclusions over time by quarter. And the reason why it's summarized by quarter is because there's a certain seasonality to our discipline data. I'd like to orient you to the two colored lines. The first one is the goal line, which is the green line, and we want to see a decrease in the number of exclusions, and these are exclusions from the classroom. The red line is the median score, or the middle score, based upon the data that we've seen over time this school year. The data that you see here is reflective of our quality improvement social-emotional learning schools, of which there are 27. When I first assumed the position of Positive School Culture Manager, we worked with three schools, and then those increased year to year, eight, 17, and now 27. I'm happy to share, in quarter one, you can see that our median score in our QISEL schools was below the goal, and our goal is already set at a 20% reduction. Second quarter, we were close. And then third quarter, based upon the data that we've seen, we predict that, again, our median will be below the goal line, which is what we want to see, and we've seen great success within this work. So I wanted to share an exciting update in terms of what we're seeing with decreasing exclusionary consequences in the schools that we're targeting for our quality improvement work. Now, I'm going to transition for additional updates in the academic space to my dear friend, Dr. Dawn.
Good afternoon. For the academic side, you have a graph in front of you. This is our ELA benchmarks. The benchmarks are given three times a year, and we are looking at winter 2019 to this winter. The benchmark ended in December. And what this graph shows is the percentage of students that met or above proficiency based on the RIT score. And as you can see from the columns on the bottom, you have first, third, sixth, 10th, and then all of our students. Those particular grades are our priority grades. I would like to turn your attention to the column that says "all." And if we look at winter 2019, and fall 2019 is when pre-COVID started, and if we had 35% of our ELA students meeting proficiency, this winter, and again, the assessment concluded in December, we have 30% of our students meeting proficiency. So we are growing towards proficiency results from 2021 for winter. Next slide, please. Here's our results for math. Again, we have our priority grades at the bottom. Again, this is the number of students, the percentage, that met or exceeded our benchmark. And if you look at the column on the right for all students, in 2019 winter, we had 35%, and this winter, again, they ended in December, we have 16.8%. Next slide, please. What we are really excited about is our growth, and what we do understand, in order to meet proficiency, we need to make sure that every student and every seat is growing daily. So this is our growth summary for reading. And as you can see, we have, again, our priority grades, first, third, sixth, ELA 1 and ELA 2. And if you look on the left bar, that is our fall growth summary, and the orange is where we are right now. And as you can see, we are continuing to grow toward proficiency. Next slide, please. This is our growth summary for math and ready for mathematics. Our priority grades are first, third, and sixth. What you will see for math here, that we have two different diagnostic platforms, but we are still growing. This is from fall '20 to fall '21, and as you can see, we have exceeded growth. And again, our goal is to grow toward proficiency, and all of this is our tier one core instruction. So how did we get here? How are we making these increases in growth for ELA and mathematics? Next slide, please. Thank you. It is because we have our amazing reading and math specialists, who are providing targeted support in those priority grades that you saw in those graphs. And so I want to call your attention, this is our six pillars, and this is how we are operating at excellence. The first is how are our reading and math specialists impacting our student outcomes? We are using a high doses tutoring model, where specialists are working with small groups of students on targeted support. We are then, we are able to analyze and act upon our data, so we are progress monitoring weekly to make sure that we can inform and know the specific supports our students need. And then I want to call your attention to the last pillar. We are using the improvement science work to help us monitor their progress. Next slide, please. And this is evidence on our run charts. So for you, I have the ELA and math specialist progress monitoring tools. As you can see, they have run charts for each of those priority grades, which are first, third, sixth, ELA 1 and 2, and Algebra 1. And so they are progress monitoring the students' growth as it relates to those critical areas of focus of each grade. And so on the left, we have math. In the middle, we have our reading specs for K to 6, and we also have 7 to 12. Next slide, please. We are also excited about our first-grade readers. As you can see on the graph, right now, in winter, we have 321st-grade readers, which is 28.4%. The same time last year, we had 33 readers. So we are super excited, and again, this is winter benchmarking data from December, so we still have a long way to go. We want to also quickly shout out, we have some elementary schools who have really been laser-focused in making sure that that tier-two intervention is directly aligned to our core instruction. So I just want to quickly shout out Chase, Hyde Park, and Midway. Thank you. And Ms. Chrissy Reeves? And Ms. Chrissy Reeves.
Dr. Dawn, first, I just want to point out, all of that data that we just looked at includes data for all of our students. But we know that we also want to take a closer look at whether our diverse learners are accessing the curriculum and making gains. So this graph that you're looking at demonstrates one way to see the progress our students with disabilities and our English learners have made over the past year. The numbers that you see on the vertical axis of this graph are percentages, and the bars are showing gaps between the scores of these groups of students and their general education peers. So the blue bars are 2021 data. The green bars are 2022 data from the most recent MAP and I-Ready assessments that we gave this year. Now, this is important on this one. That arrow is there to remind us that we want these bars to go down over time. So in this case, going down is good over time. That's our goal. And you can see on here that from last winter, which was the middle of the pandemic, to this winter, these gaps have shrunk quite a bit, particularly in reading. So what this means overall is that the number of students with disabilities and English learners who are able to demonstrate mastery at a proficiency level or above is now much closer to that of their peers. Next slide, please. And of course, this is good news, but we know that there is still more work to be done, right? We could have the best curriculum, the best teachers, the most comprehensive MTSS framework in place, but there are always learners who are going to need additional supports beyond those tiers of intervention that we give to all of our students. One of those groups of students is students with disabilities. And so there's going to be a lot of work behind the statement that I say now. But the two overarching things that we always have to do for our students with disabilities are, provide the supports needed to ensure that they can access grade-level curriculum while also directly addressing their individual learning goals through specially-designed instruction. So some specific strategies that support that work include incorporating the principles of universal design for learning into tier-one instruction, implementing evidence-based, high-leverage practices that we know have the highest effect on students with disabilities, providing goal-based specially-designed instruction, and using targeted and individualized accommodations and modifications that are specifically based on student needs. In the short term, we have also been and are still providing recovery services to students with disabilities. And that adds an additional layer of support for those students who struggled with learning during the pandemic and need a little bit more focused instruction to make some gains. Next slide, please. And then another group of students that requires some additional levels of support are our English learners. The two main goals for this group of students are to provide evidence-based strategies and supports that help them access the curriculum while also directly supporting them in the acquisition of English language proficiency. And the way that we do this is by using an evidence-based sheltered instructional model that is usually referred to as PSYOP. And that is a model that's been proven effective in meeting both the academic and linguistic needs of English learners and by also providing accommodations and modifications that are based on individual student need. We've also added, though, some additional increased supports to specific targeted groups, including preschoolers, so that we're working on that everybody reading by first-grade goal to our newcomers to the United States and to high school students as they progress towards graduation. Another new program that we've added this year is our EL Super Saturdays program that we're very excited about. And it offers some language and academic supports for high school students beyond the traditional school day. And speaking of beyond the traditional school day, Liz Wolfe is going to talk to you about our Summer Scholars Program.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So we want to talk about additional opportunities that allow our students to show mastery of specific learning outcomes and standards, hence Summer Scholars. Next slide, please. As you know, last year was the first year for Summer Scholars. We have several things to celebrate. We had a record number of our high school students earning graduation credit. We had almost 50 August graduates attend Summer Scholars. We had over 11,000 students enrolled in the programs. We were able to provide hot meals for breakfast and lunch for our students as well as snacks in the afternoon as well. Every single CPS school, elementary and high schools, incorporated social and emotional learning into their daily schedule, which we are expanding upon this year. Next slide, please. We also wanted to take time to have a huge celebration for the academic celebrations that we saw as a result of Summer Scholars last year. So for ELA in grades 1, 2, and 4, we saw the percentage of students at or above the 55th percentile double compared to those students who were recommended for the program but were not able to attend. For math, K through 5, so in every single grade level for math, K through 5, the percentage of students at or above the 55th percentile doubled, again, compared to students recommended for the program but were not able to attend. Next slide, please. And then for this year, as I recently said, last year was the first year of Summer Scholars. So we have spent the good majority of the fall semester meeting with our principals, meeting with various departments within our organization to see how we could improve for this year, first year too. So the first thing, we decided where we were going to begin planning earlier. So again, mentioned that we started planning this in the fall for this year. We wanted to be able to have our ILT teams get involved. So having those collaborative planning sessions with our schools was essential in getting that planning started early. We are aligning our enrichment partners to include more SEL core components into their summer enrichment opportunities for the afternoon for our students. We want to include our jumpstart resources for our youngest learners on Schoology. So we have a uniform platform for all of our pre-K and kindergarten teachers as well to access the adopted curriculum. We want to improve our ability to measure impact for pre- and post-assessments for our ELA and math, especially in grades K through 8. And we want to also take a strategic look at our spring MAP data to our fall MAP data and compare for what is called summer slide for the amount of students in the growth that was lost over summer. We want to see if there is less of a slide for those students that did attend the program. And then we also want to personalize the academic lessons so that teachers can both use the adopted curriculum but also personalize the instruction for the students based on items within the I-Ready platform, the math platform, the MAP test as well for ELA, to identify those very specific learning outcomes that still need to be mastered. So using our adopted curriculum and personalizing it so that our students can have personalized instruction based on specific items that they still need to master. Next slide, please. And I'm going to hand it back over to Dr. Bunker.
So in closing, what we've learned and next steps moving forward, we are working with a steering committee made up of various stakeholders in order to have a cross-functional, integrated team approach. We want to backwards map our strategic goals against, so, spring 2024 deadline and looking at on-grade-level instructions, students with disabilities, and positive school culture. So how can we continue to build capacity and capability within those three buckets? And then continuing to integrate and collaborate across departments in order to provide an optimal academic experience for all students. Next slide, please. And this graphic just demonstrates the cross-functional work that we have been doing this year. And I thank you and open it up to questions. And my colleagues will come forward for questions. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. And I just want to say to everybody who's here, thanks for sticking around a little bit past 5:30. I certainly understand if people need to go. I know some board members needed to pick up kids. But board member questions? Ms. Bolton?
I won't belabor anything. I'll just focus on Summer Scholars if I could. The 11,000, and I think we went through this last fall. The 11,500 students enrolled was not the number of students that participated.
Correct.
That was closer to 4,000 or 5,000, or do you recall?
Do you recall? I thought it was closer to 7,000 to 8,000. We can look into that, but...
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks, appreciate it. And then these, on Summer Scholars, I think are good stuff that we learned, and especially starting earlier. And again, so the public knows, these are dollars that we will continue to have. And people need to know not to necessarily expect this. And this is, are we still paying teachers their full amount as we did last summer?
That's my understanding, yes.
Rather than a summer scale?
Correct.
And then, last thing, the number of students that were participating, I think this is great about credit recovery, that number increasing, the number of kids at the high school that did that. Is, did we do something particularly in the Summer Scholars Program with our high school kids that needed that credit recovery? That we can, when we don't have this money anymore, we can't do Summer Scholars, something we learned about getting that many kids?
There's credit recovery.
I mean, to me, that's the biggest story. And I'm really glad we're going to concentrate more on the enrichment, because that's very expensive as well and needs to be with the right people for the right kids.
Some of the things, we're trying to be more proactive and address it within the school year. So we have students that are recovering credits right now. We have built some curriculum to make it easier for everyone to access. But we're really trying to address that need during the school year as opposed to the summer.
Last question, is that a lot of that, what we're doing on credit recovery, that is electronically, that is it? Is that the focus for us for the credit recovery? And it's starting before the summer, which is what you did last year, which I thought was very smart while the kids are still in the building?
So the majority is digital, but it's really based on the needs of the students. So if you have a student that needs that curriculum in a different way, teachers are providing access.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Vice President Jones?
Yes, I want to follow up on a statement that Ms. Bolton said around the Summer Scholars Program, which I also thought was an excellent program and happy that 7,000, 8,000 kids participated and look forward to even having more. I know I've seen things on our website about enrolling in Summer Scholars. And I want to know, well, let me back up and say, I think with the numbers for COVID going down, that there's a high likelihood that a lot of students will not be enrolled in Summer Scholars. So are we doing anything to continue to promote it, to make it so attractive that they want to come? I mean, you know, so is there anything that we're doing?
Yeah, we are working with each school, and we've highlighted definitely some major parts of the program. So the academic success that we saw last year, we are getting that word out. We have also really connected with enrichment and how we have not only connected it with more of an SEL component, but we've also been meeting with our enrichment partners about including specific academics into their program as well.
Okay. So a stronger focus on enrichment, which I think is good as well. Thank you.
Other board member questions? Mr. Morosky?
Thank you all for the awesome presentation, speaking a lot of my love languages and saying a lot of my trigger words. So I'm just going to try to be brief. Ms. Bolton and Ms. Jones already talked about a lot with the Summer Scholars piece and the credit recovery. So that's awesome to hear, figuring out how to bake it in. Something you said that really, really, really piqued my interest, and I don't want to speak for Ms. Bolton, I'm not that stupid, but I will, and I'm sure did her as well, is, can anyone talk a little bit more about the universal design learning in the UDL? And what exactly? We're talking about, that's the way. I actually was talking with my chamber members today in my day job, particularly ones in the disability field like Silo, OVRs, like lobbying the city to start doing more of this with their buildings. And so however I can support, I want to be loud about it.
I will try to control myself, because I could probably lecture you all night on UDL if you let me.
Fine with me. Sorry, guys.
No, we know that, not only because it's in legislation, it's in guidelines, it's in best practice, it's just, it is good best practice for the principles of universal design for learning to be available for all students in tier-one instruction. And as we work to develop this more comprehensive and integrated MTSS framework that Carrie was talking about, we know that that has to be a huge part of that tier-one core instruction. And that's like top of the list of what we're doing. So hopefully, you'll be very happy because you'll be hearing more about it as time goes on.
That's so awesome to hear. And we have the Assistant Treasurer here. Don't tell Ms. Wagner she might have a heart attack if we start talking about outfitting all our buildings. They can comply with UDL principles, but thanks for the presentation. It was great.
Thank you.
Great, great. I think, thank you all very, very much. I had just one small thing and then one reflection. The narrow question was for, I think, Ms. Wolf on the Summer Scholars results slide. That was slide 18. When it's saying that the percent of students at or above the 55th percentile doubled compared to students recommended for summer school but not attending, you know what I'm going to ask? I'm trying to understand the two comparison groups. The one group are the kids who were recommended but didn't attend. And is the other group the kids who came to summer school? Or is it the kids who came and were recommended? Does that make, I'm trying to figure out if it's like, I can clarify too if I'm being opaque.
No, you're fine, you're fine. The second number is for, so the two groups are the students who did not attend, and the other group is for the students that did attend, not necessarily that were...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so the reason I was raising is, it seems that could overstate the impact a little bit, because those are kids who are opting in, even though they weren't recommended, who might have been higher-performing students. And I'm not, I think summer school is the right thing to do. I'm glad we're doing it. I think it's important. I sent my son, you know, so I think he had a blast. And I want to make sure we're continuing to find ways to look at the impact on the most at-risk kids, which I'm highly confident we can do. And then I think that the bigger picture thing I just wanted to share is, as I look at slide nine, is it possible to bring that back up? So when I look at, this strikes me as something, and I think everybody's on the same page, and I could be wrong, but I just wanted to check, where two things are true. One is, we should absolutely celebrate the improvement because it is clear that we are having more kids learn more over time than in the past. That's a big deal, and I think we should celebrate that. The other thing that I think we're also saying, I just want to check, is that at the current world, fewer than half of kids are, and it's not on grade level, like this is a growth chart. This is saying fewer than half of the kids are making what we'd expect them to make in a single year. Is that right or not?
And I have QI Aaron who can come up also. So this is for, at the beginning in the fall, they took the diagnostic. And these are the students who met their personal growth target, which, if you look at the entire year, that is amount of learning that should happen in one traditional year. So when you look at the graph, those are those students who met that.
Oh, so that's helpful, because that means, I think I was incorrect. This is saying that if, let's say you hit 50%, that means they've made in half of the year, half of the year's worth of growth. That's actually right on target. That's great. I mean, I think then this is an even bigger deal than I thought it was. And certainly want to say congratulations to everybody. Thank you. That's great. And if I'm wrong on any of this, please tell me. Okay, great, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Any other questions? Okay, thank you all very much. I think as we close our meeting today, you know, a round of applause for our presenters, please. Thank you very much. I think, I just wanted to say two things very quickly. One was, I've meant to do this all year and have not yet. But I think in this next round of committee meetings, I'm going to be able to stop by for at least a little bit in each committee meeting. So as people meet over the next couple of days, I will be there for at least part of the time. I'm excited to watch, be helpful, learn as much as I can. And the last thing was, tonight, the Jewish holiday of Purim starts. I have gifts for you all, which I left at my house. And I swear, I swear it's real. I will bring them on, I'll bring them on Monday. But for people who aren't familiar with Purim, no, it's food. But for people who aren't familiar with Purim, I think there are themes that are relevant because it's a day about a group of people that was confronting real danger. because it's a day about a group of people that was confronting real danger, but prevailed in the end because they chose courage to challenge the norms of the day they were living. And I think those are themes that resonate in a lot of different spaces, including ours, at least for me. And so I apologize that I left your gifts at my house. I will do my very best to bring them on Monday, and have you perform, everybody. Any last announcements? Okay, have a good evening. See ya.
Evening, everyone.